All right, Pete, can you hear me well?
Yes, I can hear you.
Awesome.
I'm on the mic.
All right. Hopefully, this will go smoothly.
Oh.
I just want to check my settings for... I'm crying out loud. All right, I may have to fiddle with something real quick.
Okay.
Hi, Pete.
Tammy and Katie.
Uh... Apple tapping in. Nice apple.
Nice.
How are you?
A-tushy, Abby.
Good. So, do you know what... Who's LMA? I see Mike Sinello is here.
Yeah, I'm just having some technical difficulties with my video... My video capture device right now.
Doug's connecting.
I see that. Did you know Doug celebrated his 25th wedding anniversary recently?
Oh.
Twenty-five years.
God bless.
Well, that's what I said to Trish.
All right.
Hey, Mike.
We've been smoother now.
Mike.
Okay, so let's see what's under my more. Okay. So I want to show the participants. Okay. Mute participants upon entry. Do not allow participants to unmute themselves.
Pete, I did chat with Walter, and he will be calling in.
Awesome.
Pete, do you have... Do you have experience with breakout rooms?
I do not.
Okay, so as the co-host, I can't actually... I can't actually put people into the breakout rooms. That'll either have to be you or... Have you... Did you assign me as a co-host or as just... As a host?
You're a co-host.
Is there any way to make me the host?
Are you talking about for executive session?
Right, because as the host, I can put people into executive session and I can't join.
Okay. So before we go into executive session, I make you a host?
Um, yeah, if you can make me a host.
Yeah, it says make you a host.
Where is Chris? There we go. Ask unmute.
Hi, Greg.
Admit. All right, Doug. Okay, let's see. Chris Cosgrove asked to unmute. Greg, I don't know if... I don't know if you want to be unmuted, but I'm going to send you a request to unmute. You don't have to unmute yourself. The only way to unmute yourself at this point is for you to accept that invite. So whenever you're ready, that's the time to do it.
Okay, thank you.
Let's see, 860-354-1208 is Walter?
Yeah.
All right, Walter, if you're listening, I've sent you a request to unmute.
Hey, Mike, can I listen on phone?
Huh?
How is Walter unmuted on the phone?
Walter, if you press, I believe it is star nine, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Or disconnect, one of the other. Chris, Mike, Mike, Chris can't get unmuted.
Sorry, sorry, it is stars. It is star six for to unmute yourself on phone, Walter. All right, where is Chris? Asked to unmute.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great, thank you. Hey, Mike, if we mute ourselves, can we then unmute ourselves or no?
No, I have to unmute you. So every time you guys mute yourself, I'm going to, as quickly as I can, send you a request to unmute yourselves. If you don't want to unmute yourselves right then and there, then don't accept the request.
Okay, thank you.
So Greg, I think you unmuted yourself, so I'll send you a request. And again, you don't have to click it right away.
Thanks, Mike. Go ahead, Pete.
Doug needs to get unmuted, Mike.
Yep, just send him a... Just send him a request. Let's see who else isn't here.
Mike, I'm going to stay muted for most of the meeting. I'm here just in case there's questions on a job description with the youth agency. So at that point, can I just send you a message to unmute if needed?
Raise your hand. Do you know how to do that?
I do.
Okay.
So that's perfect. I'll do that. Thank you.
All right, where is my agenda? All right. Dan Casagrande. Okay, so Dan doesn't need video right now. Dan, I'm going to send you a request to unmute. Don't click... Don't accept it if you don't feel like it just yet. And then I'm going to stop your video. Greg, I'm going to turn your video off too, since we don't need it just yet. All right, Stephanie needs audio, is that correct?
Yeah. She does.
Okay. Mary Jane, if that's you. All right, okay.
And Vince McDermott, Mike, is going to be in the executive session.
All right, we'll just go over that real quick before we go, just to make sure I've got everybody. Then I'm going to just stop your video. Uh, who is this on iPhone? Oh, uh, Mary Jane, I'm going to send you a request in just a second. That is iPad. And then I'm going to just change your name so I can keep track of everything. Okay, that looks like Tommy Pillow. Stop video. All right, Stephanie, I'm going to send you a request to unmute. You can accept it when you're ready, and I'm going to take you off video.
Walter's still muted.
Who?
Walter.
This is... Looks like Randy. Randy, I'm just going to stop your video. Mike, uh, here we go, Mike's unmuted.
Michael's...
All right, guys.
Coming on now.
What's that? What's that, Pete?
Mike.
Hello.
Yep, gotcha.
Hello.
Hey, Pete, it's Walter Bear's birthday today. We have to wish him a happy birthday.
Walter, you didn't tell me that.
Walter, if you'd like to unmute yourself, I've sent you a request. Star six should unmute yourself.
Mike is doing it again, eh?
Uh-huh. He's the one who's doing it.
Star six.
That is correct.
All I know is David.
Let's see, um... Do I need to mute anyone else?
And Mike, could we do the video again as well?
All right, one second. Here we go. Folks, this is a brief, a brief tutorial on how this is all going to run. So I'm going to set the microphone, and here we go.
Can I hear you?
Going up, though. Going up, too.
Hi, I'm Mike Sinello, and I'll be your Zoom meeting administrator for tonight's town council meeting. The meeting will begin at 7:00.
Can I hear you?
Before the meeting starts, I put together this brief instructional video to help you get better acquainted with the Zoom meeting platform and how this virtual town council meeting will operate. Before we get started, we would like to kindly ask non-council participants to please keep your audio and video muted throughout unless called upon. As you are brought into the meeting, for example, from a waiting room, you will have the momentary ability to unmute your video. We kindly ask that you refrain from doing so, and each participant's video will be manually muted upon entry, one at a time. Myself, I don't know what's going on there. So, let's see. All right, so we are going to do public participation in just a minute here, public comment. When, if you would like to participate in public comments, what you need to do is raise your hand. That does not mean literally raise your hands to the screen. That means open up the participants panel on the bottom of your screen of your Zoom.
Can I hear you, Mike? You're very faint.
All right, can people hear me now?
There you are.
Okay, so I'm just going to... I'm going to skip the video and just go through this as quick as I can. So when we do public comment, folks, what we're going to need you to do is raise your hand. That does not mean literally raise your hand to the screen or to your camera. That means that you're going to have to open up the participants panel, and next to your name, there should be an option, if you click more, to raise your hand, or on the bottom right, there is a... A pair of three dots that should allow you to raise your hand. Keep your name. If you would like to raise your... If you would like to participate in public comment, raise your hand now. Do not take it down until we have gotten to you. If you are a participant in this meeting, such as one of the attorneys, I will send you a request to unmute yourself. You do not have to accept it right away. If you need to get my attention for anything or need to be unmuted, please raise your hand as well. We will be going into executive session at the end of the meeting, and we will handle that internally. We will have to come back on to simply adjourn the meeting or to announce if any decisions have been made in executive session. The reason we put that at the end, so you guys don't have to sit through that if you don't want to. It looks like my video is starting to collapse. I think I've gotten everything taken care of. If you want to see all of the speakers at the same time, top right corner of your screen will allow you to switch between speaker view, which will only show the person who is speaking, and... And gala review, which will allow you to see everybody all at once. Uh, we do ask that when you join, you please keep yourself muted. Can you please mute your video as well? Um, because when you first join, I cannot control whether or not you turn on your video or audio. Council members, real quickly, if you would like to... Every time you mute yourself, you need me to allow you to admit you back in. So that means I will send you a request to unmute right away, as soon as I see that people have been... Have muted themselves. Um, if that's the case, do not... You don't need to accept the request right away. But I will need to... I will need to unmute you to get that through. So I think that should just about do it. We are at seven o'clock. I am taking down names. Walter, you are calling in from a phone, so if you pressed... It should be... I'm just going to check again with Zoom. Uh, star six. To unmute yours... To mute or unmute yourself. Um, so anyone calling in from a phone, yes, to mute or unmute yourself, it's star six. All right, so Pete, I'm going to take down names, and... It's on you.
Pete, just again, I think, I think I have Doug, Katie, Chris, Mary Jane, Michael Gold, Michael Mahome, Walter, Tom, and David on, correct?
Yes. Okay, and then, Mike, who are we showing as has their hands up for public participation?
Uh, Marie, Marie Matrico.
And...
Pat Erickson. And I do not see any other names that are up.
Okay, so going once. Going twice for public participation. We are at 7:03. And we have, uh, looks like an iPhone 102, Mike. Can we, can we unmute this person to see and get their name and address?
All right, whoever has logged on is iPhone 102. I've asked you to unmute yourself. Go ahead.
Hi, John Pagusi with Lake Little One Hundred and Thirty.
Are we doing the pledge allegiance first?
Yep, we're going to do the pledge. Yep. And we just want to make sure we had the right name. So John's going to be on for a little bit later, under Mayor Com, under Mayor Agenda, Mike. Say it, Lake Authority, or Lake Little One Hundred and Thirty.
Walter has his hand up also, Mike.
Yeah, I unfortunately can't unmute him myself. He has to do that from his end. I've sent out a few requests.
Okay.
Okay, if we could all rise for the pledge. Skelly, can you lead us in the pledge?
A pledge allegiance to the United States. And to the public, which stands one nation.
Indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Justice.
Having a moment of silence for the men and women in the armed forces and for our first responders. Thank you. So, Mike, can we have the first person for public comment?
Okay, so that would be Marie Matrico. Unmute request sent.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, can you also allow my video, please? I think it's better if you guys can see my face.
Pete, that's your decision.
Yep.
Yeah, I cannot... Oh, okay, so you have to send me. Okay. All right. Hi, everybody. Good evening, Mayor Bass, members of town council, and others who are participating in this meeting. I wanted to address you on behalf of my family and at least 40 other families who will be impacted by the hybrid reopening plan for the new school year 2020-21.
Arima, can I get your address, please?
Sure. Nine Sterling Drive.
Thank you.
Uh, I'm sorry, I prepared. I'm just reading because I wanted to get through this quick. I do... I am representing... Or I'm speaking for multiple families, so I feel that I'm going to take maybe five minutes, maybe slightly over, since I'm trying to speak for multiple families. Um, as I said, we're a group of families who have both parents working, single-parent homes, children with special needs, parents or parents who feel that their children are not going to go... Do well during the remote learning at home. First, I'd like to introduce myself. My name is, as I mentioned, Marie Matrico. I have been resident of New Milford since 2003. I've owned property in New Milford since 2004. I pay taxes, obviously. My husband worked for a small business in town for 11 years. He now works in Danbury for a company that makes large heating systems for buildings, including hospitals, so he's an essential worker. We never collected unemployment. We always participated in our town events, voted for both town and BOE budgets, supported our local charities, events, and businesses. And I'm sure other families who have co-signed my letter, who was... That was shared with the town council members and the mayor, um, have as well. Both my children were born in New Milford Hospital. I currently work for a Connecticut manufacturing company that's located in Danbury, and it's been in Danbury for over 50 years. We manufacture everything in our Danbury facility, so it's all US-made, which includes silicone parts, which are used in Ventec GM ventilators, which you must have heard of during the, um, it was on the news. Um, and you've seen it probably on TV. Our business is featured on the GM website, and if anyone is interested, can check that out. So I'm also deemed an essential worker. Uh, and I would just like to, as I mentioned, take five, 10 minutes just to explain what the families that I speak for are... What we would like the town council, members of town council, and mayor to consider. Uh, I just want to make a sort of a parallel, an example. For example, we all, I'm sure, pay tax... Pay insurance for our houses and our cars, and we all hope that we never have to use that insurance. But we pay into that pool because we never want, you know, to be left... Without support if we have some sort of a tragic event or such as an accident or something happened to our homes. We want to be able to know that we're protected, and we can protect our families. Similar thing is with our taxes. We pay our taxes, social security, local taxes, to be able to participate in public education, to support Medicare for elderly, social security for retired. Even though we're not benefiting from it now or unemployment, our employees or employers are paying into that as well, in case something happens where we have to rely on that. We all hope that we never have to, uh, but, you know, as members of... Responsible members of the community, we, we obviously do that. The times we find ourselves in now are unprecedented. We, with the school, right now, is the Board of Education. They're actually in another meeting that I left, um, you know, just a moment to join this meeting, to be able to address you. We know that school now is going to go on a hybrid model, and a plan will have distance learning for three days, and two days the children will be in, in school. This leaves us scrambling, trying to figure out how to keep our jobs and still help our children get an education. Board of Education just told us that they will have to take... But this, yeah, basically, they'll have to see who is logged in on the days that the children are supposed to be at home in order to count the children as present for a school day. This is mandated by the state. So if you have a household with either a single parent who's working, a household with two parents working, where our schedules are hectic, we're trying to find a place to put our children. Maybe our parents are helping relatives. We're, you know, who is going to make sure that especially younger children are logged in and, and participate in the, in the learning? Uh, my hus... On my personal side, my husband and I are looking into, you know, working shifts. Uh, he has been working shifts, although the late shift is no longer available to him. So that means he's going to have to cut hours. Um, you know, from his work to be able to support children. I have talked to Brian today, and luckily, he was able to get me off the waitlist for youth agency. Although I still think there's some issues to be worked out there, um, as I mentioned to Brian. So in, in speaking with Brian, he told me that the three days a week that I would have my child in care of youth agency, which I believe is a great program that the town runs, and we can do so much more with that, and possibly this is something for you guys to consider. It's going to cost me 170... It costs my family $175 a week for one child. I'm choosing to have my child not, you know, hoping that he'll be able to do this on his own. So $175 a week for one child. There's families who have two, three, four, five children, and, you know, families who are nurses, also essential workers. So how would they be able to afford something like this and, you know, have their children be supported? Now, I know some of the... Some of this decision that to go hybrid and the decision how to run the school is really not in the hands of town council or the mayor. I completely understand that, but what I'm really here to ask you is to consider to provide us with some assistance. And what I mean by that is to work with the Board of Education to try and, you know, as you've been working with the youth agency, to expand the services so that it can serve all the people that need, need that service, that cannot have their children at home. Assumption is that, that the hybrid plan makes and the state makes is that parents can work from home. Not everybody can work from home. That is a false assumption. We still have manufacturing in Connecticut. We still have people who provide service, our first responder, as you mentioned them, our teachers. You know, they have children as well, and they need support. And, um, so what I'm asking is for the town council and the mayor to consider how we can, you know, find in the town budget or in some emergency funds to cut the fees. $175 a week is very steep, uh, to, to help us. We have not... We did not choose this. We do not want to stay, you know, stay at home or affect our children or lose our jobs. We want to be able to continue to be productive members of this community, to keep our houses here and to pay taxes and to contribute to New Milford, which...
Mayor, this is Pete. Can you kind of wrap it up? Because we're about almost...
Yeah, I'm, I'm about... I'm, I'm at the end, Mayor Bass. So, um, and, and the other thing I want you to consider, how this broadly affects the economy of New Milford. If you have families who suddenly have to find the... In their budget to spend $175 a week to have their child in care of, let's say, youth agency. I'm using that as an example because that is a town-run program. Uh, you can imagine that that's possibly two times out in a downtown restaurant. We're not going to be able to eat as much, which is good, becomes a luxury at that point. It affects our businesses, purchases, and things like that. So if we have an economic development department that helps our small businesses stay in business and, you know, contribute to their, to our local economy, I would hope that we can help the families that are working and also pay taxes, help, let's call it, stay in business, quote unquote, or keep our jobs so that we can continue to live our beautiful lives here in the New Milford, Connecticut, which we love and cherish, and we want our children to continue to grow as well. And, um, that, that really concludes what I have to say. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Uh, Mike, next?
Next is Pat Erickson. I just wanted to give a disclaimer that would have normally have been in that disclaimer video. Public participation is limited to five minutes. However, I will not be muting anyone except at the request of Pete Bass, who is the mayor, or the Sergeant-at-Arms, who tonight is Doug Skelly. So Pat Erickson, I'm just sending you out a request to unmute.
Good evening, Mayor and Town Council. Pat Erickson, 65 Buckingham Road, New Milford. I just wanted to thank the mayor and the Public Works Department and all those involved in getting us through the horrendous storm and the mess that Eversource left us with. You all did a fantastic job. I know the mayor probably worked about 200 hours that week, and it sure showed on this Wednesday meeting. He looked like he was ready to drop. Uh, Mayor, I hope you've earned two free tickets to the John Oliver Memorial Sewer Plant in Danbury. And on that, good night, gentlemen and ladies.
Thank you, Brad.
Good night, Brad.
Thanks, Brad.
The last thing is John Puglisi. I'm gonna send your requests on mute. I don't know if you wanted to participate in public comment.
Is with Candlewood, I mean with Lake Lilnoa, and we'll be talking about that shortly.
All right. That should be the end of it then.
Okay. Katie?
Okay. We have the consent agenda, agenda, excuse me, move to accept items 3A, prior minutes, and B, tax collector.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions? Thank you.
Okay. Item four, appointments. I'm gonna do these separately because the two of them are quite lengthy. The first motion is to accept the Lake Lilnoa Authority Officers and Assistants per the July 2nd, 2020 revised list, which all council members should have.
Okay. And Mike, can you unplug Mr. Puglisi, the chief?
Shannon Young here too.
Thank you.
Pete, okay. Shannon Young is.
Mr. Puglisi, the, who is the head of the patrol. He is on, he is on our call tonight.
So, I'm just letting you know Shannon Young is too.
Yep.
Okay.
All right. So Chief, how are you tonight?
Very well, thank you.
We had some, as we were looking at the, the agenda two meetings ago, one we had to counsel, this was on the agenda, we had some council people that wanted to know how the names were vetted for your patrol officers. I was hoping that you could give a brief history to the council.
Before I do, real quick, Pete, do you want me to bring on Shannon?
Yes.
Okay. Request sent.
Thank you.
You can bring him up video too, if that helps.
Absolutely. Thank you, Chief. Mike, can you bring, can you put the video on, please? And also for Chief.
Request sent.
Good evening.
Oh, there you are.
Okay. Thank, thank you, Chief and Shannon for coming tonight.
Thanks for having us.
If you could kind of just give us a little bit of an overview about how the names were vetted and picked for the patrol officers.
Sure, I'll speak to that, Shannon. The, all of the officers are post-certified police officers that either work in a, one of the local municipalities that surround the lake, or through the police officer standard training counselor website have applied for jobs and have been on for some time. Most of these officers have been on for a number of years. I, I did provide you with the dates of hire. However, due to turnover, we have increased our staffing and, you know, due to demand as well. So we brought on additional officers and some additional assistants who, through advertisement on the post website and flyers at the local police departments that surround the town, surround the lake, and word of mouth to officers that are currently working out there.
We had a motion. Did we have a second?
Yes.
Okay. And do we have any other discussion for the chief or for Chairman Young?
Yeah, I had a question. It was one of the questions I'd asked the last time. Do you have any women applying for these jobs and minorities? What is your policy for women and minorities that are applying?
Sure, we don't, we don't discriminate, and currently we don't have any. We had one last season, an officer, but we had a turnover. She couldn't, her, her schedule didn't allow for her to work the hours, and she, she took a leave of absence, but, you know, it's, it's, it's basically, the requirements are certified police officer. There's no, there's no questions on, you know, race or their agenda. So it's pretty much if they wanna come work, they apply, just like everybody else. There's no, we don't recruit differently for anybody.
Okay.
Any other questions for the chief or for Chairman Young?
Yes. Yeah. Did you have, did you have any applicants that were rejected? Not recently. In the, in the, in the past, we have had people that weren't qualified who are applied. They weren't post-certified officers, so if they didn't wanna come on as an assistant, and we didn't, we didn't have any openings for assistants, and they applied as police officer, they didn't meet the qualifications, so yeah, they had been rejected.
I have one more, another question. Do you interview these people every year? Are they re-interviewed every single year when they're reappointed for reappointment?
Most of them I work with on a regular basis at my full-time job at the police department, and several of them I know, and if they indicate that they wanna come back for the following season, they do so. There's not a re-interview process. It's just if they provide, if they are no longer certified, then they can't stay on as a police officer on, on the patrol.
Any other questions for the chief or for Chairman Young? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions?
I would be abstaining for the same reason I gave the last time. I will not be supporting Mr. Ash or his son as part of this. Thank you.
Item 4B.
Thank you, Mr., thank you Chairman Young, and thank you Chief Puglisi. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you, gentlemen.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Item 4B, move to accept the Riverfront Revitalization Committee II, temporary. There are seven members, two alternates per the list supplied. Term for all will run August 24th, 2020 through February 23rd, 2021.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you.
Okay. Item 4C, move to accept Jasmine Decusen Jara as a replacement on the housing partnership, replacing Carolyn Haglen. This is per our Chapter 2, Article 8, Section 2-125, 126 of the Code of Ordinances, Section 1003. Her term would run August 24th, 2020 through January 31st of 2021. That's a typo on our agenda. It says 20, but she obviously isn't going backwards, so.
Anything can happen in 2020.
We have a first and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions? Thank you.
Mayor's remarks.
Real quick, first, congratulations to Ryan Kafis. I attended his Eagles Honor Scout Ceremony Sunday. It was a pleasure to see a new Eagle Scout and former Eagle Scouts and Boy Scouts that were there, so it was a very good tribute. Congratulations to Mr. Kafis. Our COVID-19 numbers as of today, state of Connecticut, and these as we know are confirmed numbers since the beginning of when we tracked the COVID numbers. State of Connecticut is at 49,940. Litchfield County is at 1,588, which is up 12 from Friday. Hospitalizations, I'm happy to report, we're still at zero. We've had a pretty good run at no hospitalizations in the county, which is what the governor and his team looks at heavily, is hospitalizations. In New Milford, we are at 327, and that was up since five on Friday. In speaking with our Health Director, Mike Cresspin, these five were basically within family units, so it wasn't much of a spread. But we are continuing to watch very closely because Danbury has had quite a number of spikes, and as we all know, a lot of our, a lot of our residents either work or go there and vice versa. So we're continuing to watch and monitor that situation very closely. As far as the update concerning the tropical storm that affected us all with power outages for a maximum, for some of us, eight to nine days, we continue to explore different opportunities, one of them being with your permission, a little bit later on, talking about us joining the litigation with Danbury and other surrounding towns concerning Eversource. They were, for the council, they were extremely poor in how they handled the situation. They were not staffed properly. They didn't have the right resources in place. They moved resources down south when they should have been here in the northeast. They then tried to get out-of-state contractors. It took longer than they thought they would, and on top of that miscommunication and lack of communication was the call of the day for them. They were not able to tell us how many boots were on the ground in New Milford until day six, and I'd like to thank our DPW department, who did an unbelievable job in clearing the roads they could clear, and then we had to wait for Eversource with their Stay Safe teams to come in and clear the rest of the road that had trees wrapped with wires in them. I can't thank our legislative team enough. That would be State Representative Buckby and State Senator Miner for fighting with us and getting additional resources to New Milford. We were able to get those the, the last Saturday, and then a big push on that Monday. But they were very, very neglectful in what they were doing, in my opinion, almost criminal when it came to some of our larger senior, senior assisted living places that were without power, some of our condominiums with the elderly without power, and to me, it was a disgrace. So we're gonna be meeting with Eversource executives later on, either this week or next week, but as I said, we'll be talking about this later under Mayor's comments with your permission to have Randy DeBella continue to move forward with us joining Danbury when it comes to litigation against Eversource. As far as continuation with a road debris removal for the, for the storm, DPW is going road by road. First, we're going to the town roads. There is a Excel document that's on the social sites and our town website that's up to the date. It goes up to when DPW lets us know what road is completed, and we put that up, so it's kind of up to, up to date as to which ones are getting done. We're going through the roads once, and afterward, done with those roads, we're going into the private roads and picking those up as well and debris's up as well to help our residents. Our recycling center was open when we had power. We also had free service for a week for garbage for those citizens that did lose a lot of their food due to lack of power, and I wanna thank the recycling team as well. Also thanking all our first responders, medical staff, dispatchers, DPW, citizens, businesses, all that worked together to get us through this, this storm and storm recovery. So I'm very thankful to our residents and to our first responders and community for that. An update on our roads. We continue to do our road work here in New Milford, and some of the roads that we just are finishing, what we're working on now is Geiger Road, and that's doing a complete reclaim. We just finished Carmen Hill 1, Carmen Hill 2. We're now working in the Indian Ridge area, and I will bring the council up to date more on that as we move forward. Also to let you know that I, that we are going to be retaining the service of MTS, which is Municipal Tax Service, and what this company does is it will be going through the, through the town, through our roads, and looking for cars that are registered out of state or out of town that have New Milford residents on there. So their job is to find those and relay them to the tax assessors so that they can be put on the town rolls. That money will be helpful to us for continued road work and continued other projects, and it's fair that everyone pay their fair share. If they live in New Milford, their automobile has to be registered in New Milford. So we'll be talking more about that as this progresses. Library continues its construction. Right now, I went in there today and with Stephen, our clerk of the works, and we looked at the, the demo work, doing inside, had done quite a bit. They're doing some on the outside now too, and one on the 18, is it 1848 House? Katie, 1898, 1848 House? One of them. So they're working in there as well. That's a good, I know, it's good to see.
It's old.
The also, that isn't a town one, but the president, the Congregational Church is doing their steeple and their roof work. I went up there today, and Committee Chairman Whitman had given me a tour. It was just a wonderful thing to see and a real blessing that they're working with that. Our town hall roof will begin work in the fall. Our building committee is finalizing that with the engineer, and hopefully we'll be having that ready to go, and that will be a standing seam roof, same as the high school roof, which will be a 50-year roof. So we're excited about that. Also, you'll see town sidewalks being repaired. Right now, they're at the, the contractor is over by the Max area and has done some work up by the Bank of American, will continue to be doing that work throughout the fall as well to make those sidewalks safe. So that being said, Katie, I'd like to move, move on to the youth agency as Dr. Levin had another issue today, and he will not be able to give the, his update.
Okay. So we'll move to item six. We'll skip over that to item seven, motion to approve the job description for the New Milford Youth Agency Education/Enrichment Program Supervisor, which everyone received a copy of that job description.
And we have a second by Councilman Cazur. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions?
We have an update from our Director of the Youth Agency, Jason O'Connor, if he's here tonight? Yes?
Mike, can you unmute Jason, please?
Request has just been sent.
Evening, Mayor, and evening, council. So, um, the update I'll provide just regarding that job description essentially, this isn't a new job, if that matters. It's, it's a job that one of our employees has been maintaining since roughly 2016, and that's Vinnie Van Waddam. He just never officially had a job title apart from his childcare site supervisor over at Scatacoke Middle School. So with that, what he's been doing there is, is essentially working with after-school opportunities, and that's anything from our culinary opportunities to our robotics, dance, you know, we did adventure hikes. It was, it was all after-school opportunities to try and get students familiar with maybe extracurricular activities that they weren't familiar with. So with that, we thought it was a great time come, well, unfortunately, a great time during, during, during the pandemic with a lot of after-school opportunities ceasing to exist. So with that, with, as you may know, or as, as all of you know, the Sullivan Farm with it being relinquished from the youth agency. So with that, we wanted to maintain our educational opportunities there, our after-school enrichment opportunity. So what Vinnie has been doing, and he was again doing this already, as in the case in early spring, we had South Kent Schools, there are Newtown Schools there, and Danbury High Schools there as well, doing different kind of edu. We're looking to expand that within New Milford schools, so Vinnie's been working with our curriculum staff within our schools and working with the famous Mark Mankin over at the farm now for, for the various opportunities that he will offer. So that's just more information on that job description. It's, it's not like we are hiring someone new, we're just giving credit to the individual who's been main, who's been doing that position. With that, Mayor, I don't know if you wanna just have me just do a quick update about the agency itself?
Yeah, if you could, Jason, and talk about also, you know, you were at your position, and now you have, have become the Director of the Youth Agency. If you could talk about the person that obviously has taken over your role prior to you becoming Director as well.
No problem. No problem. So alongside of me taking over the Director's position, for many of you know, I've been employed as the youth advocate, or I was employed by the youth advocate since the last five, six years. And we were just able to hire Natalie Rodriguez, who fulfills that position now. And she's been getting, you know, hit the ground running. And she's working on our Bike Day program, volunteer activities with our New Milford Police Department, Girl and Boy Scout troops. She's implementing our mentoring program again within the schools. Phenomenal, phenomenal person to work with. And, you know, so she's kind of taken on that Student Advisory Board role where she's going to maintain that student cohort of volunteers that we implement throughout the town and help out various different agencies. So it's a huge, huge welcome and great opportunity to have Natalie on our team. Along with that, through the pandemic, there's been obvious social, emotional needs that have affected our children. And so with that, starting July, our social worker, Sarah Wells, had started to implement tandem programming with it, our Girls Group, which is called Girls Power, our Mindfulness and Stress Managing Group, and that's in tandem and team with New Milford Library, and that's Mindful Mondays. We have an LGBTQ plus I or I plus group, and that's Peace, Love, and Stand Up to Hate. And we have another one kind of for COVID-19, really, really focused, and that's just called Worry Less Kids. And that looks at social isolation and kind of getting back to being what a kid is supposed to be and how kids can kind of live a somewhat normal reality during the pandemic times. Throughout all of this, you know, our childcare hasn't stopped. We just actually had our last day last Friday, and it was, you know, another phenomenal year. I know Brian Hembrook, our childcare director, is on this call as well, so he may be able to speak later in the agenda on what we're doing for childcare on this. But they were essentially running our childcare program, one of the only ones really in town that was able to do it with all the strict cohorting for the Office of Early Childhood. And we had about 70 kids per week for about for nine weeks. And so a huge shout out to Brian Hembrook and his staff and all the Latchkey Site Supervisors, all of our student employees that we rely on, the schools for allowing us in Saranoble and working through that summer program. And just allowing us that stability so we can try and plan for the fall and what the fall childcare, you know, system's going to look like.
Katie, you have a question?
Yes. Jason, back to the new job description. What's the salary for that job description?
I do not have that number in front of me, Katie. It is, it is a full-time hourly wage.
I'm more concerned, Jason, was it in your budget?
Yes, it is in the budget.
And, okay, so Vinnie was doing the tasks of the job, just didn't have a title to it?
Correct. Vinnie had his site supervisor position titled, job description, and he was acting as our enrichment coordinator without a title.
Okay. And for Natalie, because, you know, you were anticipating your change during your budget process, obviously, she was included in your budget as well?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any questions for Jason? Thank you, Jason.
Thank you, Jason.
Thanks, Jason.
Okay. Item eight, I'd like to move to adopt the resolution for the neglected cemetery account that Tammy, is she with us? Tammy can read this to you, I guess. Everybody received it in their packet. Tammy, you want to give us a discussion and then?
Absolutely. Thank you so much. So this is the Neglected Cemetery Account Grant Program through the Office of OPM with the State of Connecticut. It's a biannual program that allows the town $2,000 to be used for neglected cemeteries, which they define as a cemetery that basically does not have an active cemetery association. So throughout the town of New Milford, we have several cemeteries. I'm working very closely with Adam Halassi Kuhn, who is a champion for these cemeteries. And last year, or two years ago, rather, we used the $2,000 for the Maryall Cemetery and Long Mountain Cemetery. This year, having gotten information from Adam, Long Mountain needs some additional work, and there is some additional work needed at the Gallows Hills Cemetery. This is not for maintenance work. This is a little more long-term. So whether they are turning stones right side up that have been fallen into the ground or toppled over over the years, or pushing back brush to maintain the boundaries of the cemetery, that is the focus of these monies. They do have two years to complete the work. Again, we received the grant two years ago. We had no problem making sure that we are in compliance with the grant dollars that the town of New Milford was afforded. So I'm requesting that we move forward with an application, and your approval of the provided resolution will be appreciated.
All right.
Thanks, Tammy.
So I'd like to read the resolution before you vote. I think that is called for here, correct?
Yes.
All right. So be resolved that Pete Bass, Mayor of the Town of New Milford, is authorized to apply for and accept on behalf of the town a grant from the neglected cemetery account. Mayor Bass is also authorized to enter into and execute any and all agreements, contracts, and documents necessary to obtain said grant, should the town be selected for a grant award.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thanks, Tammy.
Thanks, Tammy.
Item nine, we have a list of things here under Mayor's office. Several of them were already handled, but the first one is the, I'll make the motion to set a town meeting date concerning 25 Church Street.
Second. Thank you, Chris. And for all of us, this was on our regular town council meeting on March 9th. We approved the offer that went out for review, and it was at $295,000, which was the appraised value. Obviously, then COVID happened, so we weren't able to do a public hearing. So I'm asking now with conversations with Attorney DeBella, we're able to do a public hearing. So I was hoping that with the town council approval, we could set the date tonight and move forward with the ability to sell this property if the public so chooses.
We could, would you like to set it for our next council meeting?
The second one in September?
That would be September 28th?
Yes.
So I'll just amend my motion to say to set the town meeting date of September 28, 2020 at 6:45?
Second. We have a first and a second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Oh, sorry, I'm sorry, Doug, go ahead.
Pete, maybe I missed it. How are we handling this? This could be online, or how is this going to happen?
Yep. So it's going to be similar to what we're having now. Or if the governor changes his executive order, one is expiring, that allows us to then be able to do in-person meetings with public, then we'll be able to do that. That's due to expire, I believe, September 6th, which is why I'm asking for the later September date.
So I guess you'll be taking names and addresses during the vote and that kind of thing, correct?
Correct.
Exactly, September 9th, Mayor.
Thank you. September 9th. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Thank you.
Mayor, so under your mayor's office, the youth agency comes up next, the before-and-after school program?
Yes. Thank you, Katie. So in speaking with, I received some correspondence from some of our parents. They're very concerned, obviously, about the hybrid model that the Board of Education was approved to start this year's school process, especially when it came to childcare. Kind of the timeline, and Jason, can you unmute Mike, Jason O'Connor, and Brian Hembrook? Because they'll be talking as well concerning as they are before and after care and childcare for the town. So one of the things that I started to do is kind of do the due diligence of their requests. What would that look like? How would that happen? And how could we help? So in starting with the timeline, the youth agency had been talking with the school administration concerning before and after programs since July. During this past week, I've spoken with several childcare facilities about their businesses and the ability to add childrens to their programs. Also looked into how other towns are handling the same situation. One town being Newtown, one town being Danbury. I know Jason, I'll ask Jason to speak a little bit about Newtown as far as Danbury. They now are going totally long-distance learning as of today. Due to their COVID numbers, they have decided to just go the long-distance model. I asked them if they had any resources concerning the long-distance model, and they do not to their parents. Their parents are responsible for them finding childcare, daycare, or helping with assistance. To keep on with the timeline, on Friday, I met with Dr. Smotis, our new interim superintendent. Jason O'Connor was on this call, as well as Brian Hembrook from the Youth Agency, Angie Chastain, Wendy Fallenback from the Board of Ed, Greg Osipau was our finance director, and this was all concerning childcare and how we were going to do it, if we can do it. The first and foremost thing is to find out exactly how many children would need this service. Right now, we have no idea because the Board of Ed sent out the survey last, this past Friday. I asked them when we were going to get the timeline back, or how many students they believe would be attending school versus staying at home and long-distance learning. Dr. Smotis told us that we could expect that by this coming Friday. And then also the cohorting, meaning how many would be in each cohort, the youth agency would get Monday. So without those numbers, we're kind of, as we all talked together, we're kind of in a lurch as we don't know how to prepare for that because we don't know how many kids there are yet. So we're going to be working on getting those numbers once we get that from the Board of Ed and the superintendent's office. Also, I spoke with Scott over at CMC, Ryan, Jason, myself, and Karen Pollard, as CMC is looking to close their doors. And they're looking to close their doors due to the fact that, under Governor Lamont's executive orders, he's not allowed to do any kind of parties or any other kind of ancillary revenue because he had three revenue streams that were providing his income for his business. Without those two other revenue streams, it's simply not applicable to him. And also the fact that cohorts have been limited by early child development from 14. We've been in contact with them. They've now raised it to 16 children. But in speaking with the childcare centers, that's not enough. So we're advocating them to go to 20, the same as you would when you go to school. And that will be helpful for some of our childcare centers. And speaking with our childcare centers, Brian Hembrook's done a tremendous job telling them kind of what's happening on the town side as far as COVID-19, the effects. But one thing that they weren't aware of is how the school itself was handling their situation when it comes to the hybrid model and how things are working. So we have decided to do biweekly meetings, starting this next coming week, with the Board of Ed members and with the childcare centers, so that we all can be on the same page and we all can learn from one another what's going to be needed, especially parents that are going to need childcare service. We're also partnering with our social services team because some of the people, as you heard about today, this would be a very serious economic impact on them. So we want to make sure that those individuals can get resources that may be available by the state and also vet them if we're going to do any kind of subsidies as far as after school or regular childcare. So for a moment, I'll turn it over to Jason and to Brian, and they can kind of talk a little bit about it as it comes to the youth agency, and then I'll come back and talk a little more. Jason and Brian?
Good evening and hello again.
Quick clarification. Pete, you referred to CMC?
Children's Movement Center. Children's Movement.
Okay.
Across from the John Pettibone Community Center.
Yeah, I know a Pettibone name. Thank you.
Going back to what Mayor Bass had said about the Newtown Plan, Newtown is offering a similar before and after school and full-day childcare program. And it's $45 a day with $40 per sibling. And it's not as, I guess, lengthy as ours. And theirs is only going to October 1st, where a thing that Brian and I have been working with is that New Milford Public Schools don't have any definite date set. So that has been tricky planning around because at any moment, students can give a week's notice to go from different learning platforms, from our understanding. So their before care is 7:00 to 9:00 a.m., and then their after care is 3:30 to 5:30. So our care is extended in that sense. There were previous conversations of it being possibly free, serving everyone, and that's just not the case. I troubleshooted that, and it's very similar to the program we're offering, as the mayor had offered. I would like to hand this over to Brian with the utmost respect to Brian as this is essentially, you know, he's amazing at what he does. He's the expert. And so I'm going to give this up to Brian Hembrook because he will do the best job explaining it for me.
All right, thanks. Thanks, council members. So I figured I'd start by just explaining what our program's going to look like for the school year. We're offering families three different options. There's an option A. That includes, it's $55. That includes the two days that the children are physically in school learning. That will give them before and after-school care on those two days. So we are there at 7:00 in the morning in the school building till they go to school, and then we're back with them until they get out of, when they get out of school until 6:30 each night. And that's $55. The second option, option B, is $175. That was the one that was spoken about earlier. That provides full day care for the three days where the children are out of school from 7:00 to 6:30, 7:00 in the morning until 6:30 at night. And so we discussed a lot the hours. We were considering trying to shorten the hours to lower the price a little bit, but we felt like the longer hours would benefit parents that are already trying to figure out what they're going to do during this time. So 7:00 to 6:30 is a long day. We do have to staff that whole time. So that's where the 175 comes from. The option C is $200 a week. It provides before and after-school care on the two days they're in school and full-day care on the three days they're out of school. Our rates break down to option A and B are each $5 an hour, and option C is $4.40 an hour. You know, so the mayor charged us with, as always, trying to keep our program affordable since it is run through the town, and that's where those rates came from and are in line with our rates historically. What we're running into this year is we now have to shift from running just before and after-school care to on every single day, running before and after-school care and full-day care on each day. The plan for that is each school cohort A, the kids that are in school, will have before and after-school care on Monday, Tuesday. And the kids who are not in school those days will be at the John Pettibone Community Center. They will do their distance learning from there. I've been very careful about what we've promised parents we can do in terms of distance learning. I've told them that we can facilitate that learning. We will get them logged in, help them with technical issues, answer any simple questions we can, provide them with a space that's appropriate for learning. But we will not be teaching them. And I think that's what's been the toughest for parents is that they're looking for, a lot of them know their kids and know that this type of learning is going to be very difficult for them. And so we're going to help as much as we can, but there is a gap there. And, you know, it's not something, our first charge is always childcare. We're trying to, please, yep.
Yeah, I would just like to, you know, like what Brian was just about to say, you know, our first charge of care is a childcare facility. The more we expand outside of that sector, the more we increase our capacity, our level of education that we're providing. When do we become essentially a secondary school? When do we become essentially a secondary school without the benefit of having school professionals or school experts within our childcare? So that's something we've been looking at our agency is, is essentially, we want to have our best childcare opportunities, our best childcare program, but to also put the burden of the education and that synchronous learning on not just our childcare, but the many other childcare facilities within town, that's going to be a big ask. It's a big ask for a lot of facilities that don't have the capacity for the special education, the capacity for that one-on-one tutoring. So as Brian said, we're going to do our very best to handle the logistics, making sure kids are signing on, making sure they have the support systems, making sure they're engaged and following whether it's asynchronous or synchronous learning. And, and that's going to be the real trouble here is that the conversation, as Mayor Bass could say, was yes, childcare has nothing to do with education, but now it does. And, and so some childcare facilities where it felt a little slighted that they were left out of the Board of Ed's plan, especially now that we're going to be housing many of our children in, in the community and we're going to be expected for their success of their distance learning platform. And I think we're putting together a very good program, but that's a hard expectation and a hard promise for our childcare facilities as well as the youth agency to undertake when we're not the school. It's the school that chose this plan. It's the school that closed the schools and came up with this plan and the cohorting. And as Mayor Bass just had mentioned before, we still don't have those cohorts. School starts September 8th. Hopefully we get numbers by Friday. Hopefully we get cohorts by Monday. So again, that's just a reiteration of where we're standing right now. So with that, Brian, you can continue.
Yep. And so just to kind of wrap it up, you know, we, the mayor had asked us to try to increase our numbers because I was at the very beginning being safe. We do rely on the school for our space and I do have to provide staffing relative to those numbers that the OEC is making us keep. So I was a little bit weary about our numbers to start with, so we did have a waitlist. We were able to increase our space and our staffing and so I was able to get everybody off the waitlist that was currently on it. We do have spaces available at each school currently. Our capacity for each school would be Serenoble. We would have a capacity of 80 kids. Hill and Plain in Northville, 42 each and Scotticote, 21. That ups our numbers from last year at about 140 to this year at 185. We feel like that's a number that we can work with, that we can do safely, we can still follow all the guidelines we need to follow and hopefully get everybody in that needs to get in because we don't want to have anybody on a waitlist this year. We want to try to ease stress for parents, not add to it. So if you guys have any questions, I'd be happy to help.
And also just real quick before we go to the councilman, the councilman is we're asking the social services team to help us because we do know there are going to be some parents that aren't going to have the financial means to do it, but we also need to have a means test like we would with any kind of means testing, whether it be for energy assistance, food assistance. We're going to be asking them because they know how to do it. They have the procedures in place to properly vet that and also keep those documents safe and secure. So we'll be working with them as well. Katie?
Brian and Jason, thank you. Brian, you've done a yeoman's job of getting this straightened out, but I, I have to say to both of you that don't be defensive about, before you start, about how people are going to look at your handling of learning. Childcare is childcare. You're right, Jason, that is what it is. It's not being a teacher and I think it's wonderful that you're taking all these other opportunities to be concerned and look after this. I just think at 185, that's, that's, that's a lot. I don't, because we don't know the number of people who need this, even with all the other childcare agencies in town. I think you've done a great job. I just don't know how this is going to work out for people who decide at the H-hour that they want it. There's only so much you can do. And I guess, I don't know if the perception is there that you're going to be teaching and going beyond just making sure the kids are sitting where they're supposed to sit and looking and their computer is on. But I think you're right to make it very clear what the guidelines are and what parameters you're going to work under because this is a wonderful program that you have in mind and the pricing is certainly, I don't know how you could do it less than $4.40 an hour, but I think it's important and Mayor, you can help with this is, is that every person who signs up for this understands exactly what they're getting. And, you know, as Jason said, you don't want someone saying to you at the end of the school year, halfway through the school year, well, gee, my child hasn't learned to do X. What's going on? And I'm not saying parents are going to do that. I know many of them are very happy about this program, but they're, I just think it's a slippery slope when you start this. You know, I hate to say that all the time, but it's true. But thank you, Greg. And thank you, Brian. Wonderful how you've worked this out.
Thank you, Katie.
Yeah, I echo that, Jason and Brian. I think you guys are really stepping up here to help, help the kids in New Milford through this pandemic. Two questions, at 185, do you think that's a reasonable chance that it might be, the need might be significantly more than that or we just don't know at this point? And then I've got one other question.
So actually, in what I've been doing is we've been polling our parents. So we gave them through email, the opportunity to choose a plan. The ones we didn't hear from, we reached out by phone too. So we have spoken to all our parents. We're still, again, it's tough for them to make a decision until they know which days of the week their kids are going to school and how that's all going to look. But from the initial response, I actually think we might be the other direction. I think people are starting to begin to realize what school is going to look like when it opens and are making different choices. So I believe we may not get to 185. We might be less than that. So I think we'll be able to run a good program that way. Again, I'm hoping like Pete was saying, that the OEC will increase our numbers to 20 per group. It works a lot better for us. If that happens, we'll be able to run an even better program. But the way it's, it's structured right now, those are the numbers where I feel like we can be safe, keep everything sanitary and hopefully be able to assist more than we are promising to with other things that, that are going on in the program.
Great. And then just the second question, and I don't know if this is opening up a can of worms or not, but for one year only, and hopefully we're only in this for a school year, is there any opportunity with the school system for them to lend some professional services?
So we did talk about that a little bit. There's contract issues with some of that stuff. A lot of these, I mean, all the teachers are on those three days where they're not physically in the building. They are still working. So there was issues as to how they would be getting paid. And again, from our standpoint, I don't know that we want to take on teaching kids from, because again, that's not the point of this. The point of this is for them to be distant and so for them to kind of send it off to us and we just house them somewhere different was, was the issue.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, guys. Again, I appreciate your, your hard work.
Mike?
So you, you only need one, you need for those 16-person cohorts, you just need one worker for each 16 to watch them?
No, so that's, that's what makes it difficult. We need to keep at least a one to 10 ratio. So for 14 kids or 16 kids, we still need two staff. If we get to 20, that's why it makes it easier for us because then we can now have two staff for 20 kids.
Gotcha. And you have enough workers for all this?
Not yet. I'm working on it. The before and after school program, we will be able to. We have great high school and college age staff. The issue, I was kind of hoping that college kids weren't going to be going back to school. We could borrow them for the middle of the day or that maybe the high school guys on their days that they were distance learning could still work for us. It doesn't look like that's going to be the case. So we have advertised for childcare workers in the middle of the day. I've reached out to Westcon, to their education department. So those are the ones that are tough to find, people for the middle of the day that are, you know, are able to work those middle hours, but we'll find them. We know, we'll, we'll, we'll make it work. We have some staff here that we can repurpose. I'm always down to help and so at least to get us started, we'll, we'll figure it out. And then, you know, we'll, we'll, we'll get it staffed depending on how many people we have enrolled, so.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you to Jason and Brian. This is monumental and I can't say, I'm sure all the parents are very grateful and we're all very grateful to you for, you know, for doing this. I guess my concern, what are we going to do if we have to follow Danbury's lead and we have to shut down?
Oh, thank you. So I should have mentioned that before. So I am currently working on a plan. It's called our red plan. If the school does go red and there are five days distance learning, what we would do is we would determine how much space we have outside of the school building. We do have some options other than that also, but we would look first there, determine how many spots we can safely open up because if we do go red, I would imagine that those guidelines for 16 kids per room, they also drop down. And then we would open up the limited number of spots to, we would prioritize essential workers, healthcare workers, first responders. And I haven't come up with a price for that yet. I'm still working on getting the hybrid plan out first because that's what they're supposed to start with. But before school starts, every parent in our program would have the red option plan. And then we would continue to, that program, we would be able to continue to grow as there was a need. So if we have a need for 30, we'll find a space to house 30 of them. If there's a need for 60, we'll continue to grow and find space for 60, so.
Great, thank you. That's awesome.
Thank you.
Yep. I got my question answered from the other, from Chris about the ratio. So if there's, let's say that we're limited to 10, 12, 16 people and we're being charged $4.40 and, I mean, isn't the personnel really the overhead?
Yeah, I mean, so our, we're self-sustaining, so our goal is to not make money, it's to break even. But the 11 and a half hours that the kids are there, so they're paying that for $4.40 or $5 for 11 and a half hours and, you know, that way. So we have enough kids to cover, that's how I broke down the staffing to, to income ratio. What we charged the last year and it breaks out that way. And so again, we're hoping that they up it to 20. That makes it much easier for us, but we're able to offset those four extra kids in our, in our.
Yep. Now here's one more question. Here's a crazy question. Are there any grants available for this? Any federal money?
So as, yeah, as Mayor Pete was talking about, we're looking at through social services. Tammy's actually working on finding, hopefully finding some grant money that we can use through social services. A lot of the, the money that was tied to the federal programs, like the CARES programs and things like that, come through the Care for Kids program. And because we're in the school building, we're exempt from licensing, which means we, we can't take, which means we can't take care for kids, which means we're not always able to tap into some of that money. And so we're looking elsewhere for things through, through, like I said with Tammy, through grants and, and other ways to source some other forms of income, so.
Great, thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
Chris?
Sorry, one more question. Is there a plan for potential testing of staff and, and students for COVID?
Not at this point. I can check into that. I don't know through HR how that works. At this point, we are not planning on, I mean, we, over the summer for our summer program, we temperature checked everyone every day, but that was the extent of our, our testing.
If you've got somebody who shows up with symptoms one day.
Yeah.
Now what do you do?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, I think that would default back to a town personnel policy. I would imagine it's the same for anybody that works at UW or anywhere else. I would, I would adopt those same protocols that they.
Brian, if you've been temperature checking them through the summer programs, would you not continue to do that?
So, so we're still debating that. You know, we, the, the consensus is that's not necessary anymore. I think it's, it's not a terribly difficult thing to do. The issue they were having was at big centers like giant YMCA's and as schools, kids were being stuck in line while they're taking temperature checks. That hasn't been the issue for us.
Right.
So we'll, we'll consider continuing. I think the temperature check's a nice, easy way to just see if they're feeling well to begin with. And it wasn't an issue for us, so we may continue that.
Well, you'll let us know then.
Of course, yeah.
Thank you.
Questions for Jason or for Brian? Doug?
Gentlemen, thank you for this task that you guys have been given. I can't even imagine what the things, and the questions will come as the school year begins, but I have a couple of questions just from a business kind of standpoint. I'm thinking of, now these kids, obviously, when they're not in school are going to be coming and they're going to be having homework or they're going to be online classes. Do you have desks set up for them or how does that work with the Chromebooks and so forth? Will they still be doing online learning while they're in the daycare during the day of they're not in school?
Yeah, so those days that they're online learning are pretty scheduled out, so they're pretty much like they would be in school. The school is providing every kid with a Chromebook, so they will bring their devices from home. I reached out to Dave Watson, our IT director. We're going to do a walk through the building and just make sure that we're set over here to have the bandwidth to be able to have everybody log on when they need to. As far as desks, we do have some desks at the John Pettibone Community Center that I'm able to grab, but I'm working with Kevin at Facilities for the school. I'm going to talk to him about, they had to take a lot of equipment out of the school buildings to make social distancing. So I'm hoping that we can source some of that stuff for the time being to have desks for them and things like that.
And you gentlemen will be running by how the school holidays and cancellations, you know, just say foresight of winter and stuff. If there's a day off, a half days, how are you guys working with that?
Yep, so delayed openings and early dismissals where they're the extra time for the days that they would be in school. We don't charge extra for that. And then the school is not going to have official snow days this year. What they'll do is if it's a Monday and the kids should have been in school, they just switch right over to distance learning. But we would still be open those days because parents will still need to go to work. So there will be an extra fee attached to that. That's how we ran it last year was if you, if you needed to come on those snow days, there was an extra fee that covered the middle of the day portion and we just run a full day program that way.
Just one last question and be the devil's advocate here. Say if there's an outbreak and we have more than 10 or 20% of the children, that we find out, is there a plan in place to shut down the care for amount of time quarantine or anything like that? Do you guys have, have anything in place for that?
Are you talking about just in our program specifically or through the school?
Well, I guess both. I mean, you're going to kind of mirror what the school's doing, so I guess you have to follow their lead. If they're going to close for an amount of time, then you guys become more of a full service for everyone as opposed to a part-time for some.
Right, so if the school has an outbreak of cases like, and, and they do like Danbury and go full distance learning, we will have a full program for that. If we were to have cases within our program, we're going to work with Mike Krespin. That's what the school is doing, excuse me, as well. So he'll take the lead on that and he'll let us know when we're at a position where we need to close specific groups or our whole program and he'll help us handle the contact tracing as to who needs to quarantine, who doesn't. Because we, our issue is we have siblings at different schools and so when does it become a, a secondary case as to opposed to a third case or, so, so Mike Krespin would take on the role of that to help us out, so.
Well, my hat's off to both of your gentlemen and the staff. I'm sure there are going to be some bumps in the road, but you're going to be more than just a childcare. You guys are going to have to be, you know, getting the kids all sitting down, getting the Chromebooks, so you're going way beyond care. So my hat's off to all of you and best of luck.
Appreciate it, thank you.
And, yeah, that's, that's another thing is that we're working with the school still to fully understand, as Mayor Bass was in that last Friday meeting, fully understand what the synchronous learning platform is going to be like. And the more we're able to understand that, because they're not going to be doing synchronous until two weeks into school. So we do still have some time available to set up how we are going to handle, say, I don't know, a dozen of our kids have to sign in at reading at 10:30 and then the other kids have to sign into math at 10:40. You know, working, setting up a system in place to each benefit the individual child. So we're, we're, we're going to, we're going to do our best to take into considerations of that individual plan to ensure the engagement in their daily classroom, whatever that looks like, whatever that classroom does look like. So we're, again, all we can say is we're going to do our best to ensure that the education, you know, does take, you know, is taken care of in that sense of us helping them log on and like I mentioned before.
And we're really lucky. I mean, my staff, we have four full-time site supervisors, Mary Beth Lopez, Lori Keller, Mike Triscari and Vincent Van Waddam, that without them, we wouldn't be able to do this because I know that whatever comes up here, we can definitely just say, yeah, we got it, we'll figure it out because they're able to roll with everything. So it'll be a learning curve. We'll figure it out as we go some of it, but they'll be great and we'll, we'll, we'll work it out.
Absolutely. Thank you both gentlemen and thank your staff as well. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any more questions for Jason or for Brian? Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Mayor, this was listed on here for discussion and possible action. Do you need the council to take any action on this program?
No.
Okay, good. Okay, good. Okay. So the next item you had here was you were going to discuss the town in Milford joining Danbury with Eversource suit.
Mike, Mike, could you open up Attorney DeBella's mic, please?
Good evening.
Hey, Randy.
How are you?
So I want to make sure Randy is live. I had spoken with Randy during our storm event as to what we could possibly do as far as a town to the real egregious behavior and lack of performance that Eversource had. Mayor Bowden had decided to follow with a suit. And I believe Ridgefield and Bethel, I believe are within that suit now. I'd asked Attorney DeBella if we have the availability to join that suit. And Randy, if you could let the council know what our abilities to do that can be.
Mr. Mayor, could you please unmute Dan Castagrande as well?
I'm sorry, Dan. Could you unmute Dan Castagrande?
Just as an overview, I don't, we don't want to get into strategy. This is not an executive session matter because we're not in litigation. But the fact is, is that Dan and I have arranged with a number of towns actually to, to intervene in a, in a PURA action, the Public Utilities Regulatory Administration. And Dan, I would turn it over to you on that issue.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, everybody. What I can say is that Danbury last week filed a motion to be granted party intervenor status and that motion has been granted. We join several other communities in our area of the state in obtaining intervenor status. PURA has scheduled hearings that are going to kick into high gear in the fall. And in addition, I just want to clarify as to Danbury because I'm representing Danbury on that as well.
And Kent, by the way.
And Kent. We, when we say Danbury's filed a lawsuit, we have, we have moved to intervene in the PURA proceeding. A separate lawsuit by Danbury on behalf of its residents, I can tell you, is under active consideration by the mayor. No final decisions have been made. And we look forward to collaborating with New Milford and other towns in developing a cohesive strategy.
So, Mr. Bass?
So what I'm hearing is there's two separate possible actions, one with PURA and one through the courts. Is that correct? That's correct. That's correct, Dave.
Now with the one with the courts, would that be a class action suit?
That's, that's one of the things that we're considering. There's several. Go ahead.
No, we're not, we're not sure what form that would take because don't forget there are a number of towns. And whether or not, whether or not we seek class certification is really going to depend upon the relief we're looking for and how we're going to present it vis a vis multiple towns. You want to elaborate on that?
Yeah, with, with the court one, tell you what, I'll wait for an executive session. I think that would be the.
Yeah, I can't, I can't get into strategy at this point.
I think we should wait for an executive section, session for something like that. But the PURA one, the seeking status, I don't see any problem with doing that.
Yeah, that, that's administrative, Mr. Lawson. You're right.
Just a question. What about CCM? What are they doing? Are they filing any suit or?
CCM, CCM has also filed a motion for intervention. I don't know at this point whether that has been granted, but we're certainly going to be working with them in collaboration to make sure we're presenting this on a as united a front as we can.
Right. As they represent all, all the municipalities, I, I'm just a little confused as to why we're doing something even separately, even though it's with some of the other towns when CCM represents us.
One of the reasons is that one of our goals, and we all know that the Northwest corner of the state has been the hardest hit. And each, each municipality has a unique story to tell about what the mayor characterizes, the gross negligence of, of Eversource. For example, Matt Knickerbocker testified in the public session today about the unique history that Bethel had faced. And so one of the, one of the reasons why we would certainly work with CCM, but also try to put forward our individual municipalities' efforts is to let, is to let PURA know that their conduct has been egregious statewide, but egregious more so in our, our neck of the woods.
Okay.
Yeah. The other thing, Mary Jane, is that, is that in a, in a case like this, you have to show the, the specific and particular damages that your, your towns has suffered. And that's really not amenable to a one size fits all. I don't know how else to say it. I don't want to get into too much detail.
Well, we have, we have a whole dumpster of garbage to show some of the damage.
Yeah. So you see, that's something that Westport may not have. That's something that other towns don't. There's other towns in this county who are, who want, who have special issues of damages as well. So. Without getting into too much detail, one size doesn't fit all. Dan, is that accurate?
All right. Thank you.
So just real quick, if I could just get a sense from the council that the first part, if I could use my hands to move forward with PURA, even though it's administrative function, would you like to give the consensus with our council that we're on board with that?
You want it to be a motion?
Yeah. Can I make a motion to that effect?
Sure.
Got to remember what it was. To, where are we?
I would suggest you might want to move to intervene in the PURA action on behalf of the town of New Milford.
And giving the mayor authority to pursue that matter.
Second.
A discussion on the motion. All of us in favor? Thank you. And then the next one would be to have Attorney DeBella begin the process of Randy, I'll have you gift a proper verbiage.
Yeah. What we'll do is we're, if you would authorize us to begin the process of intervention within the, within the PURA case on the administrative matter.
We've done that.
We did that. Now we're going privately.
The suit.
Well, I think we need to discuss that later. If you would. I, I think we need to discuss that in a, in a strategic way. And there's no urgency on that this week, if you will.
So you don't have to have a motion for that, right?
Oh, we do not.
Okay then, withdrawn.
All right. Thank you, everybody.
Right. So, so the motion is, is just intervene in the PURA matter. The second motion that Randy mentioned is not a motion?
Correct.
Okay, Pete, item 9D. That's the Lilanova Authority.
We already did that one?
Yes. So that brings us up to the setting the date. Motion to set a date for a public hearing for the creation of a permanent riverfront revitalization committee.
I have a second. Chris seconded it. All those in favor?
Do you want to, do you want to set it for the first meeting in September?
Can we make it to second?
Mayor, you're the mayor.
Just to make, just to.
You want to make it the second?
Yeah, just to make sure we can get it out to the paper and everything.
All right. So that would mean we'd be setting the public hearing for September 28th. We have 6:45 for the, the first one on 25 Church Street. Do you want this one to come first?
Yes, please.
6:30 on September 28th. Got it. Item 11 is our update from the economic development. Karen Pollard's here, I think.
Mike, can you unmute Karen's mic?
Can you hear me okay? Hello, can you hear me okay?
We can hear you.
Okay, great.
Hear me now.
Yes. All right. So I will start with a brief update of economic development activity. As most of you are very well aware, we are still in phase two in Connecticut. There have been some minor tweaks to certain elements, but there is no indication of us moving or advancing into phase three, especially given the rising numbers in certain communities, especially Danbury right next door. So this puts our business community under extreme pressure. Many businesses, in fact, almost all businesses have reduced capacity, maximizing the number of, of people allowed in their businesses at 50%, sometimes less than that. We are also still operating and the governor just extended the outdoor dining ordinance until November 1st. So we are anticipating that that, as long as the weather holds out, will help our businesses for the short term. But no long-term solution has been proposed yet for when we are going to be able to operate at a more normal level in those businesses. This also means that our businesses are operating at a drastically reduced revenue stream. As you heard earlier regarding the childcare or the Children's Movement Center and other businesses, the revenues, the revenue streams from events have been cut off completely and reduced capacity means less revenue as well. However, expenses continue to mount and continue to be higher than normal. The tropical storm that we just went through was another blow to a very fragile system at this time. I continue to work one-on-one with many businesses and companies trying to be strategic in their deployment of assets and personnel in dealing with a very unknown and fluid economy right now. Financial sources are very limited. Without a new federal assistance program, there has the PPP program and the IDOL program, both of which are very much relied upon by businesses in emergency situations, including natural, but also economic disasters, are out of funding. So looking at what funds are available has been a increasingly short list of being able to find financing for, whether it's an expansion program or whether it's just adapting the business to the changes brought on by COVID. And again, there's no indication that our capacities will be changing much, given that we're seeing rising numbers of cases of COVID in our area. Just to hit a couple of highlights over the last few weeks, we did complete the virtual job fair. This matched job seekers with employers. We had 91 jobs listed as available. We had over 200 applicants register for the job fair. I will not know the end results for probably another week to 10 days because the businesses need time to do background checks, pre-employment screening and offer people jobs. So that just occurred last week. But the businesses and the people who participated felt it was very helpful. And many of the businesses were impressed at the level of potential employees that were able to connect with them through using the Zoom platform and the Indeed website. So, you know, we will consider whether we need to do another one of those or whether there are other methods in matching up job seekers with businesses to fulfill everybody's needs. Next, regular communication. The regular communication cycle that we instituted for COVID with email blasts is continuing. We've also continued to increase the amount of video that we're working on. And I will be interviewing our interim school superintendent on Thursday to talk about the, the impacts of school restarting in a, you know, agreed upon hybrid model and what that means for people going back to work. And, and again, it's, it's a, it's a big economic issue to get our folks back to work is what happens to the children that need care. I have been trying to coordinate very closely with the youth agency and all of their resources. And also bringing into it the fact that, you know, childcare centers are businesses as well. And with their reduced capacity and all of the challenges in dealing with so many restrictions and cleaning requirements, it has been very tough going. And again, I think Jason and Brian both made it really clear. This is a constantly changing situation that what we know today may be very different a week from now or a month from now. And so the, the childcare centers have all been going through this. The state of Connecticut has received some funding through the CARES Act, which the Office of Early Childhood is working on distributing with two specific goals. To keep daycare capacity as high as possible and growth of new daycare seats for children. And two, to support working families with quality childcare. So they are looking at what scholarship programs they can launch. As of today, when I spoke to them, they had no specific programs to, to expend these funds that the state has received. There, there is a conference call tomorrow where maybe we might be able to get some additional information on supporting our private daycare centers as well as the youth agency. But it is, again, it's so fluid. It's hard to create a program when you don't know what is going to happen the next day and how many children are going to need care. And then, you know, how many people will be able to go back to work full-time based on those changes. Another highlight has been the approval of the tax deferral ordinance. We do have two applications to review tonight. I do expect an additional two more in September. And we also have had numerous new applications through zoning and for, for new development projects. So hopefully this is something that is helping people to make that decision to invest now while the opportunity is there and that they can have some town support on the tax side to assist. So if you, if anybody has any questions, I'm happy to try to answer them. Or we can move into the tax deferral applications.
Karen, just one question on the job fair. Will you be able to have some data for us next meeting on jobs filled, that sort of thing?
Yes, that is absolutely my intent. But I did want to give the businesses and the applicants enough time to go through their vetting, their normal vetting process.
Yep, absolutely. Understood. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions for Karen?
Yeah, we'd like to go to item 10. Karen's done with that. We'll go to 10B, which is a motion to accept the tax deferral application from ONG Industries, Save-A-Tree facility, 275 Danbury Road.
A discussion on the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Also like to move that we take action to accept the tax deferral application from Mountain Grown Organics, 266A Kent Road.
Second.
Discussion on the motion. All those in favor? Opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you.
Okay. Item 11, the Sustainability Fund. Motion to accept the mission statement and application as was in your packets for the New Milford Sustainability Fund.
Second.
So I have a question. Do we know who's, who is going to make up the committee? Like, you know, who's going to be reviewing with social services? I don't know. I didn't, I actually didn't see the, I looked for it and I couldn't find it on the site. So I'm sorry, I didn't see it if that was listed already. But who's going to be working with social services?
Yep. So yeah, Mary Jane, that's myself, Bob Capola and Walter O'Connor.
Social services is really in the case when it's, when someone is needed to make sure that we've properly checked all the boxes for need and no duplication. And that would be one of the two, I mean, there's two people there, Mary Jane, that, you know, Ivana or could be Sarah, I suppose.
All right. So it's Chris, Chris Walter. Who is the other person?
Bob Capola.
Oh, Bob Capola. So, I don't know, I just, and it's nothing personal, Chris. I just don't think you should be on, as part of this, as being a councilperson. It's just my thought. I just think it may present a little conflict. So I would prefer that you not be on this and you find somebody else.
We do want council representation though, don't we?
Yeah, absolutely.
Supposedly, it's, I don't know why you have to have council representation. There's no reason for you to have council representation. Is there nobody else? I mean, did you try and find anybody else that was willing to step up and do this?
This is something that I've been involved with this fund from the beginning and I would.
I know. I understand that. And I, I think it's a good cause. I don't have any problem with that. But eventually this will come back to the council for a yea or nay vote, correct? Is that?
Mary Jane, what we originally talked about a few, I know it seems like a long time ago, was that the total amount of any funding that's been approved by the three-person committee would come as a total. There'll be no discussion or revealing of who asked for what.
Right.
Why. So it would just be a matter of a consent agenda sort of thing with a total amount of money.
Back to the town, I mean.
Right. We would come, like, I would say, you know, so we have $1,500 being sent out from the Sustainability Fund. And that would be that.
So, but you still have a town council member who will have access to that privileged information. And that's what I think I'm having a problem with. So I, I think it would be, look better to the public if there was not a town council member sitting on, you know, going through and making the decisions along with Social Services.
Well, I'll say something that Chris might not, but I have, he just said it to you that Chris is the person who came up with this idea and people have donated the money, full well knowing that he, at the time that they donated the money, most of them thought that he would be the guy who was deciding, you know, getting the applications and talking to people. So I don't think we've had anybody upset that Chris would be one of the people looking at it. We, we had a couple people who have specified where they'd like their money to be used and that's part of the deal. There, you know, if someone specifies use it for this, for food or for that, that that's exactly where it'll go directly. But I think everyone knew that Chris was involved from the beginning and if they didn't like it, I mean, they wouldn't have given their money.
Well, thing, but I don't agree. I'm sorry. I just feel it, it, to keep it cleaner and, you know, even though they donated the money, it doesn't matter. It, it's like, he's still, he's going to be on both. He's going to be on, he's going to be seeing all the applications and then he's going to be voting on it at the town council, even though we don't know anything else, but he will know it. And I, I just, I don't agree with it. I just don't think it looks good. I don't think.
I think it's important to have a bridge. I think it's important to have a bridge to the council from the, from the sustainability membership so that it's a smooth action.
I don't think that's gonna make.
I think there's, there's an obligation to the donors that the money is distributed in accordance with how it was requested and how they donated so generously as they have. And that's one of my intentions is to make sure we stick to what we promised the donors we would do.
Yep.
I concur.
I think that's a problem. I think that's a problem right there.
I don't think.
That you're going to be sticking and promising the donors exactly where the money is going to go. I mean.
A donor makes, they make a request. Mary Jane, that's no different than any nonprofit organization. If you wrote me a check and said you'd like it to be used for food insecurity, that's what would be done with your money. If someone writes a check to the Sustainability Fund and says they would like it to be used at the food bank or for the fuel assistance program, that's what will happen to it. I mean, wouldn't we do what someone requested? They just want someone to facilitate the getting their money to the right people.
Well, I still, I object. I strongly object. And Chris, like I said, it's nothing personal. I know you've done a lot of work on this, but I just strongly object to, as a town council person, having the privilege of seeing who, you know, the applicants and everything else and being part of that decision process and then coming back to the council. I, I don't agree with that. I think it looks really bad to the public. And I.
My vote, Chris.
I may have to vote against the whole thing just because of that. I'm sorry, but I cannot compromise on that at all.
Okay, so we have, do we have a second on my motion as I?
I second it.
Yeah. My second. Pete? Question?
No, just advisement. I'll be recusing myself from any vote with this matter due to personal conflicts.
Thank you. Doug, did you have a comment?
Yeah, quick question. Chris, how much is in the account?
It's the last I checked and I haven't honestly checked in a week or so, it's a little bit over 15,000, Doug.
Yep. Okay. And just one other question, Chris. Can some of this money be offered to help offset some costs for the daycare for the youth center? Can that be bridged over or how, can any of that money be brought over to them if they request it? Or does it have to be from an outside source?
So there's various criterias and we'll look at each, each one as they come in. But, you know, you look at, it has to be something COVID-related. And they have to be, not be eligible for other funds somewhere else first. And then, then we kind of go from there. And we were actually, we're earmarking. So donors have the ability to earmark any of the three segments, which are first responders, citizens, and small businesses. So, but anything in, that's in the general fund, we're going to segment to make sure, because we think first responders have the, probably the least safety net out of all of the three segments. So 50% of that fund will be earmarked for first responders. And then 30% for citizens and 20% for small businesses. So it's going to be limited, you know, and there's a $500 cap on, on everybody except for first responders.
The, the documents were sent to all the council members, I believe, right, Mayor?
So were they alongside the agenda? You know, like, you know how we usually see the documents that are all? Because I didn't see it. I'm sorry. I just.
I think that Pat sent it, I think she sent it for the last meeting, which we didn't have.
Right.
All right. So I might have missed it because I was away. So could you, could you have Pat, you send that to me, please?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Just have a motion, a second, any other discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstention.
Well, recusing.
Yep.
That was a difference.
Okay. Thanks, everyone.
Item 12, motion for us to move into executive session. And we'd like to call attorneys Casa Grande, Dibella, Tower, and Vince McDermott from Malona McBroom.
Second.
Second.
So Mike, can you move us into?
Yep, I'm creating a room right now.
Move us into a meeting room, please.
Yep. And I'm going to assign, we got Chris Cosgrove, Walter Baer, Dan Casa Grande, David Lawson, Doug Skelly, Katie, Mary Jane, Michael Gold, Mike Nahom, Pete Bass, Randy Dibella, Tom Esposito. Do a, I'm missing someone. Who am I missing?
Vince McDermott.
Vince McDermott? Anyone else?
John Tower, is he on the call?
No.
John, please raise your hand if you're in the call. I don't believe he is.
No.
You had Dan Casa Grande?
Dan is on there. Okay. Okay, so you guys should all have an invitation. Okay.
Is the invitation in our email? Mike?
Where are we going to see it?
Oh.
It should be coming up on our Zoom screen.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't see it.
Don't see it either.
Okay. I'm not sure why this isn't.
I got one. I got it.
I do have the ability to join it, but I will not be joining it. There's no way to get around that, unfortunately. Okay, everybody, the town council is in executive session. I will get a screen up in just a moment here.
Vince, are you looking to join the breakout meeting?
I was supposed to be there.
I sent you an invitation. I don't see where I can resend it.
Where did you send it?
There should be a notification in your Zoom to join a breakout meeting.
I saw that come through and I hit it. And it didn't pop up. You there?
Yeah, yeah, I am.
It would have been a, Michael, it would have been on the screen, right?
Yes, it would have.
It would have come right across everything else. It was a one liner. And I saw that and I immediately hit that. And didn't connect.
Because it shows you as being in breakout room one and not having joined. So go to the three dots in the bottom right corner of the normal screen. They should be black background, gray foreground, where it says more.
Hang on. What I'm seeing on my screen is, come on, I'm seeing the town council's executive session will return shortly. That's all I'm seeing.
Are you hearing any sound out of curiosity?
Only you.
Okay. All right, so. I've never run into this problem before, so you'll have to bear with me here. Fortunately, there we go, okay.
I see breakout room.
All right, click on that.
Join breakout room.
Do it.
Nice music, Mike.
Yeah, sorry, folks. I just wanted to get something on there to make sure everybody knew.
I like that music.
I mean, it's actually, it's good to, so if somebody's there, they make sure that the thing isn't frozen.
Yeah, that's what I was doing it for.
Katie's muted.
You got unmute Katie.
Yeah, doing, everybody have to do it one at a time.
Everybody was muted. Okay, now.
That was hysterical. I love the music, Mike.
Yeah.
That was fantastic. It almost reminded me of a Little Rascals commercial.
Did we lose, did we lose somebody?
Still working on it. David Lawson, Michael Gold.
Walter.
Scrolling up. I don't see Walter. He must have signed off.
We have to find a way to get him to be able to speak.
Yeah.
I mean, unfortunately, there's not much I can do.
Yeah, I don't know that he has a push button phone. When you said star six, I don't know that he can do that.
I'll kick in some money for a Chromebook for him. Let's all donate one.
You think he has a rotary phone, Katie?
That's his landline. It's possible.
Is it on the wall with the long cord?
I'll talk to him tomorrow.
He's able, he's
He's able, he's able to raise his hand, which requires that he press star nine. He needs to press star six to unmute himself. And I, every, every 10 minutes or so, I send out a request.
Come on, guys.
Okay, we got some other people here on the phone, on the call with us now.
Do we?
Yep. So, Katie, you're gonna make the announcement? We didn't make any votes or?
I'm waiting for everybody to be here. I guess everybody's back. Alright, so we're out of executive session. No motions were made, no votes were taken.
Right.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Moore.
Is Walter also on the call?
No, he's not.
Aight.
Councilman Cosgrove made the motion to adjourn. Councilman Gold seconded it.
Goodnight, everybody.
Aight. Thank you, everybody. Goodnight.
That does it. Bye, buddy.
Thanks, Mike.
You got it, Pete.
Appreciate it.